Alrighty, so as I've said in this 180 man session, we're just gonna do all-in scenarios. Even though Mike, I think your first handed you gave me had nothing to do with all-ins, so that's okay. Yeah, so let's just jump into, let's just jump into the hands. So Mike, you sent this one over. Um, I guess is your question here whether you should shove this all-in or not?
The, my line was to raise here, um, but I thought that shoving was also an option. So I'm just interested to see what everyone thought about it really.
Yeah, for sure. So we'll just, I see, put it in a min raise. So let's open it up. What do you guys think? Are you typically shoving here? Are you min raising? What do you guys think?
Um, I don't mind the open. Depends on the stats of the other guys, I suppose.
Yep, and Mike, you said you're not using a HUD currently, correct?
Uh, not for the last few days, because yeah, I've had some problems with it.
Gotcha. So who's, who's opening here and who's, who's shoving?
Opening, not calling. Deterrence.
I think someone was talking, I don't know who it was, it was really low.
Yeah, it's me, George.
Yeah, your mic's pretty quiet, George.
Yeah, your mic's pretty low.
I'm mini that and calling deterrence, uh, probably fold to rest them if they ship. But after call deterrence, we're odds.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I mean, technically, you know, I think it's a profitable, if you just wanted to open shove, it'd be profitable. But I don't think that's the most optimal play in this scenario here, given your stack size is where you're at. So yeah, I think you played it right, you know, min raise here, calling off Terrence. I mean, stats are always nice to have, you know, to see how nitty or how loose the table is. But in general here, I think opening is perfectly fine.
Okay.
Hey, only one question, it's better my, my speaker?
Say that again?
It's better my speaker, or is still?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine, it's good to go. Alright, so...
Awesome.
Alright, so what do you, what do you guys think here with fives?
Probably just jump with the stack sizes around.
Stick it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the stack sizes, I guess everybody here is pretty short.
It's crazy, everyone's short, but yeah.
Yeah, so there's nobody above 10 big blinds, so yeah, perfectly fine to just ship this in.
What do you guys think if there's people around the table with, you know, say everyone was sitting on like 13, 14 bigs? That's what I was thinking about. I didn't actually notice the stacks actually then.
If everybody was sitting at 14, then you'd probably just open, can you? Depends.
That's tricky, huh?
That, that's certainly where I would like to know stats a little bit more in that scenario. It does, trying to figure out the optimal play in that scenario would, uh, you know, is the table, is somebody gonna flat you? You know, is the table completely, you know, a bunch of randoms and, you know, you have three guys that are playing really loose and they're gonna flat? So if that's the case, then shipping in here is perfectly fine with fives. You know, if you have a pretty nitty table, you know, maybe a bunch of ABC regs that are mass tabling. Uh, of course, shipping in with fives is fine, but in that case, versus your under the gun raise, you have to figure out, you know, what's their three betting range really gonna be against you and is it gonna be pretty much the same as your, their all-in calling range? Given your perceived hand strength from under the gun, so. And, and you could also, you know, open and, uh, potentially fold, you know, given if there's certain stacks that have you covered. So it's a little bit tougher to kind of, you know, throw out a scenario depending if, if the stacks are bigger. Cause it kind of depends on who has you covered, who are the players. You know, in, in general though, looser table, you know, you may want to take just a more unexploitable route. You know, if you have a tighter table, more ABC regs, then you have, uh, you have a couple more options.
Okay.
Alright, let's see what we got here. Um, okay, so yeah, you stopped the hand here. Alright, um. Queen, Jack, a little bit deeper, two shorter guys in the blinds. What do you guys think here?
I think this is where you wanna kind of have stats to know how often they fold, like to steals and stuff, if they're tight or if they're gonna jam on you.
I expect fold.
FT bubble as well, like it looks.
He'll be around the FT bubble, yeah.
Hmm, five hundred, yeah.
Well, if he's fine to have a bubble, then I'd open.
I mean, I'm not folding, I'm just thinking open, or shove. I mean, it's a bit skewed to open and then fold, but the stacks are big enough, probably. We've got, what, 14 bigs? I don't know, a lot of regs would chip, I reckon. But I prefer raising, I prefer raising and then folding to the bigs and calling the shorts, personally.
Depends if you wanna exploit to buy over regs though, isn't it? Um, cause chips is a reg, isn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, so if we're opening there for me personally, FT bubble is gonna open his, his re-shipping range on you.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, yeah.
Um, I don't know, that's my thoughts. If I'm playing it, I'll probably just open jam most of the time there, me.
Does it not look pretty strong to like open there, especially if you're opening under the gun with the stacks in the blinds?
Not really, I don't think, um.
There are only five guys on the table.
I mean, I'm thinking, what? The reason I wanted to raise instead of just shoving is that, you know, I don't really wanna bust it and, um. I don't know, 14 bigs isn't that big, but I thought if you raise and they re-ship, especially the random, they're probably not doing it with nothing. Chips might be.
Hmm.
But it's difficult, as I said, and I'm not sure if regs do that as much as people think they do.
Small blind is a reg as well, by the way.
I'm not worried about him then.
Yeah, Rafael is, I think, as well, in a BT8A.
Yeah, yeah, Rafael is, yeah, but you can't force him anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like Kev said, you know, it comes down to, are you gonna, is your open gonna be exploited? You know, the more you have the potential to be exploited, the more, again, you should take the unexploitable route. Um, you know, if chips, you know, if, if you're gonna min raise and he's just gonna exploit this final table bubble and just ship over you with a huge range, then opening up there is, you know, just min raising isn't gonna be the best option. But if, if there are randoms or maybe, again, just ABC guys that aren't gonna exploit, I really don't have a problem with min raising. Because the difference, again, kind of like we said before, the, the reason you would take an exploitable route or a min raising type of route is you just don't think that people are gonna exploit you. So that's mainly the question you have to ask is, are these guys capable of it? If so, take the unexploitable route. If they aren't, then it's okay to, you know, in my opinion, to just put in a raise. And, uh, you know, they'll probably just be playing their, you know, playing it straightforward.
It all depends as well, like, on table image, you know what I mean? Have you raised last three hands, et cetera, and shit like that, you know what I mean? Cause if we're gonna min again, they are, you're gonna get exploited, you know what I mean? Uh, if we've been super loose as well, uh, for all that, we don't know just by looking at a single hand like, do we? Uh, haven't we gotta factor all them into as play as well? What is our image and their image, players that you're playing against?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, we're definitely, uh, you know, always taking these hands like in a vacuum, as if nothing else has even happened before it. Um, so absolutely, absolutely. But, would, uh...
If, if that's just a table full of, like you said, just, just randoms, I'll min it every time.
Yeah.
Uh, but if we've got a few regs on, then like you says, I'll probably just open ship on there. Me personally, anyway.
Cool. You good with that, Mike?
Yeah.
Alrighty, so those are your hands. Let's, uh, let's see what else we got here on the hit list. Uh, let's just go down the line. Alright, so David, these are your hands. Actually, I think you have just a couple. So this is a, uh, what'd you say, it was a three rebuy? Final tables at the hands you gave me? Yeah.
Yep.
Alrighty, so let's... What do you guys think here? And is, is main instinct, is, is he a, uh, is he a reg?
Um, yeah, he was pretty good, but the thing to know is everyone else seemed pretty bad. I think space is a reg, but he was really nitty, so I was stealing the blinds, like, and getting three nine percent of the times on the two guys on my left. So that kind of influenced my decision a bit as well.
Is it final table this, or looking at stack size, FT and a five hundred?
Yeah, it's final table.
Thing is, you're not really that deep. I think, if you think you're ahead there, I think you should call it off.
Yeah, I think it's too good a spot to turn down as well.
And like, if you win it, then you can keep abusing the other players and keep building your stat.
Well, I can abuse the other players anyway, because they're just folding every hand.
Hey, what is this? Is this an MTT?
No, it's free re-buy.
Yeah, but surely this, uh, big stack's gonna keep taking spots before you can get in before you know.
I think that's, that's one of the main questions I wanted to ask is, is this guy pretty much shipping every hand that's folded to him?
No, because I've been able to open, so that means he's been folding.
Right. So who, uh, who's a proponent of calling and who's a proponent of, uh, folding?
I could find a reason actually to fold there. I mean, if he, if he is able to steal all day long from the other guys, uh, the big stack is not shipping everything or not opening very wide, uh, you still have a short stack on the table as well. So, and this is five-handed, so a little bit of ICM will, will start to be taken into account.
I mean, if you look at the guys, if you look at the guys to your left, I don't rec, oh, it's just used for a reg. It depends, if the guy's on your left are weak, I'd be more likely to fold, because you can make chips more easily off them. But if you're on a difficult table, then I guess you just have to take the spot, because, you know, you don't really have a choice.
It's like, it's like Clint said as well, if guy with his stack now, if that were me and I've got that stack and I'm five-handed, I'm opening, I'm just opening shipping in every hand, me, barring against Jose, who's got 180. Uh, that's how I play that stack. Is he playing it same way? Is he shipping any two cards there?
Um, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he certainly should be shipping any two, but...
Blind vs blind, I don't know if he will, but that's, that's pretty much what it comes down to.
Yeah. I think it was a blind V blind versus a reg with snapping king ten, uh, but all, all spots are different. Um, but like we said, it, it's all table dynamics again, you know what I mean? What's, what's happened before.
I think this was the, this was the first time he's done blind vs blind, or the first opportunity for it, at least.
I'm kind of tempted to fold, but I just, I mean, it depends on, it depends on other players. I'm not talking like specific stats, I'm talking reg or not. And if the people on the table aren't regs, then I'd pass up on a spot like this if you think you can make chips without risking your stack. So, you know, if you've got 13 bigs, you can raise fold against this, because you know they're not gonna re-ship them wide. So if they're bad players on your left, then I'd be much more inclined to fold and try not to gamble like, like that.
It's also, again, our blind is going up in, in a minute, you know what I mean? So what did they go to after 10, 56, 12, so then, as big blinds are going down, are we gonna pick up another couple of decent spots? This might be the only spot what we get. I mean, I think we've gotta factor all stuff like that into us, into it as well.
I mean, it's a gift to the short stack, if you call, to be fair. Imagine you were Kremlin, and if you saw that guy call you, you'd be absolutely delighted, I mean, I don't know.
I, I think on the surface, again, if we avoid everything, uh, thinking about everything else, I think ICM wise, you know, your bubble factor is extremely high here, uh, given the short stack that's at the table. And the fact that even if you win this hand, the other guy doesn't get knocked out and, um. So ICM wise, I think even if he's shipping any two, this is technically, um, a fold, uh, dollar EV wise. But on the other hand, if it's like Kev said, you know, is this guy abusing the hell out of the, uh, this in the money scenario where he's raising every hand, we're not getting a chance to open, is he shoving any two non-stop? That's a case where I would find a call. But David, like, like you said, if he's, if he hasn't been doing that, if he hasn't been really abusing, I mean, he may be shoving wide here and he certainly should be. Uh, maybe it's not any two cards, whatever, um. You know, i- if, if the case is like you said, David, I, I would probably be leaning towards a fold, especially with the short stack there. Um, and if we can continue to keep stealing versus the guys on the left, um, I'd probably actually stick to ICM here and, and find a fold. It, it, does agree?
I agree, I'd fold.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, all that information considered, yeah.
So, that's a good spot though, that's interesting. I think we've got another, I think this is another three rebuy final table that you sent. I think this is yours.
It's the exact same thing.
Oh, here we go, it's the exact, it's probably like a hand earlier.
Yes, exactly the same spot, I'm like...
Except for the paper this time, I think.
Here we go again.
I, I'd call this time, because you're doing shortest, and...
The ten came before the other one, as well.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, big blinds on a 7K there, isn't it, yeah?
Um...
So like, if we go back to that other one, it's just shipped blind on blind on us twice, so going back to that, I'm snapping king ten on that one.
Yeah.
Giving this information what I've just been shown here. Cause I know he's doing it pretty wide.
I'd rather call king ten as well, cause there's a good chance you're gonna have two others, whereas in this spot, obviously, it's, you're not gonna.
I, I'd rather call this one, to be honest, because everyone's got even stacks. Um, you don't, like, ICM's not so much of an issue, because there's not a guy with like a third of the stack size. I agree, the king ten's better than...
I think ICM is still an issue here, since we're on the final table.
Yeah.
And, and essentially, you do have a little bit to lose here, considering you're a bit deeper. I mean, it's, you had 70K, you know, that's one thing, um, you know, with ace deuce, maybe I'm biased against any hand with a deuce in it. I pretty much hate any hand that has a two.
Well, you, you do, your deuce is worthless, isn't it? You know what I mean? It's, uh, equity what you do, so just fuck off. Uh, but I'd probably like, like this one, when I call, I'd call that king ten.
Yeah.
But the stack sizes are the same.
I'm the other way around, man, I'd call this one, and, uh...
The stack sizes are the same, they're 14 bigs each way, aren't they? And in this one, you don't have a stack.
Oh no, but on over, when I've got that information, they're shipping blind V blind twice at me. Here, I ain't got that. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, but I mean, I'm assuming any two, bro.
Where I'm, where I'm coming, it is, I already know now, is, is shipping any two.
Yeah, that's true.
But he may already know that anyway, from at this point.
Oh yeah, true.
You know, it's difficult, like you said before, it's difficult without all the hands before.
It's all, like we said before, it just comes down to history of table and what we've already picked up on and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, I guess if you know now, it's, it's, you know, at this point, it should be wide, I just call it, for sure.
Hmm.
But you don't know anything, it's just, uh, to me, I'd just fold if you didn't know anything about it.
If it was a reg, I'd probably call regardless. I'd just assume that they're shoving everything like a lot. With this stack, I just assume it's such, and everything, really.
I, I think we're, uh, we're kind of split here on this one.
Hmm. Yeah, right, I mean, if you call and win here, um, you're all like second in chips, uh, or even first. I mean, you could turn the whole table around and have you initiative yourself. That might, might be worth something.
Yeah, I'm going back and forth. I was gonna, on the, initially, I was gonna say I wanted to fold here. I find myself going back and forth a little bit.
We are, we are lacking chips in a minute by, well, pretty much the same as the other guy. So it's not really a, a wait around thing, it's a, trying not to bust quick it.
Are you assuming at this point, um, David, that he is shoving any two cards here?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, if you don't think he's shoving any two, then I probably would find a fold, cause that means he's probably looking at his hand and if it looks pretty to him, he'd probably ship it in. But, eh, if he, if, I think if you can put him on any two, I don't think it's a bad spot. I, I would definitely need more of a reason to call than I think I would need a reason to, to fold, if that makes sense.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Also, I mean, everyone's sitting on, you're sitting on 14, 15, seven points, 14, 15 bigs.
Yeah.
I suppose there's an argument for saying, you know, we've all gonna be decent players and maybe it's worth trying to, uh, progress without having to face all-ins like this. Do you know what I mean? Like, maybe use the skill edge a bit more.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. If you base it just in general on what players are like at this stage, then I'd definitely fold this, cause there's a lot better spots where we can steal, steal blinds than calling off for this hand, yeah.
Yep, I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't mind folding both of these hands, actually. Just for different reasons, like...
Alright, um...
There must be a point where you, how wide you think he's shoving this becomes a call. How wide you, is it like 70% or is it like, you think he's all pick, he can get it in or?
I mean, the problem is, if he's any two cards, you're still only 55% of ace two, so it's not...
Hmm. And obviously, sometimes you're gonna be dominated as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'd change my mind. I think it's a fold.
Yeah, I was about to say, I think I'm, I think I'm leaning towards a fold here, for sure. Alright, let's see what we got.
It's a big raise.
Alright, yeah, certainly a nice size, uh, open from under the gun there. I think we can safely assume he's not a reg. Um, what do you guys think here?
Still leaning towards shipping. Alright.
Who's folding, who's three bet shoving?
Do we have stats on him?
Uh, the stats I had him, he was like 26 or something, with a high of like 26, 18 or something.
Snap down then.
It's a hard jam there for me, eight, eights, eights, sevens plus, I mean, eights plus, depending on guy's stats, uh, I think hard jam that.
Yeah, man, if the guy's opening 26, or playing 26, if he's opening 18, then, uh, yeah, I'm definitely gonna...
His raise, his raise does just look a bit, you know what I mean? Yeah, that's the only thing that does put me off, it is his raising size, um.
I mean, you're probably flipping, I mean, that's the problem actually, I guess, is that he's, he's not gonna really do that and fold often. And if he calls, he's probably gonna have like ace, queen, ace, jack, so just keep it up.
Yeah, with these random guys who bet big, this actually, this situation kind of came up in a hand gesture review we were doing yesterday. Um, if, if he changed his bet sizing here, I would actually be more inclined to think that he is holding, you know, a half decent pocket pair or hand like ace, 10 plus. It's just what these random guys do, in my opinion. They, they'll, they'll bet like 3X with ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack, you know, and they might, they're normal, they might, you know, with their bad hands, they might just maybe min raise. And so, well, obviously, we have no idea, or maybe, I don't know if you remember, so take that for what it's worth. Um, but if this bet sizing came, kind of came out of nowhere, then I'd be a little bit more concerned. This was, if he was just standard doing this non-stop, I think I'd just ship it in. Actually, we should see the hand.
What do they have?
Yeah, let's find out. What do you know?
It's great.
See, you made a good play, you won. So we don't really know how wide he actually was, but... And, so we get a ship here. So I guess the question is, do we ship? Do we min raise? Do we fold? What do you guys think?
Well, is it a three re or, you know, freeze out?
Yeah, it's a three, uh, three out.
Maybe fold.
I, I'd probably fold that, three out.
Yeah, I'm leaning towards fold.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably...
Do you have any info on the, on the blinds?
So just blinds, with six more, six more players to go through, aren't we, as well?
Yeah, but...
If I had 10 maybe, but we've got 12. That's too much for me, 12, 12 bigs is too much there, in this shop.
Yeah, I think maybe queen, jack, might be the, the bottom there.
Uh.
For a ship.
But then again, like we said, we're, we're 12 here, blinds are with four and eight, we're hanging, blinds, what's everyone else seven? Uh, in probably two, three, I think. You are?
We can't hear you.
You might.
Sound like a robot.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if you look at the blinds, they're gonna go up in less than a minute, I'd be more inclined to take a slightly negative EV spot. But, uh, obviously, we have no idea if it, if they are.
I think it was going up.
Alright, you can make an argument for a shove then, if they're gonna go up, preserve some fold equity. Alright.
Good spot.
Alright, so I guess the question is, do we ISO here?
Yeah.
Um, there's a lot of regs in front of you. Um...
So, stacks.
I've been doing this a lot, ISOing here a lot, and coming up against a lot better than I expect recently.
From regs or from randoms?
From regs. Um... I'm leaning towards folding, just...
Well, just because of the stacks behind, kind of.
Hmm, not so much. I have an A7. I don't know, it's, it's close. Uh, you, you know, if, if I wasn't worried about the stacks behind, I'd shove, cause I think you're, you're ahead of his range.
Yeah, then on the surface, uh, you know, if I was on the button or the blinds, I would have no problem, I think ISOing. I think the fact that we're middle position here, four guys left to act, some half decent stacks to our left as well, eh.
And you've got two regs, I don't know, I don't know about Al Kent and Do Love, but Simpson and Nonline are regs, so they'll know what you're doing. And they're not gonna be put off, calling because you shove big.
Yeah, from, from this position, I'm less likely to ISO here.
I think if I had the button, I'd, I'd, or, or further, I'd shove.
Yeah, if I was on the button here, I'd have no problem with it. But I think from this position, I'd probably lean towards a, uh, you know, fold and not ISOing. Just because...
And it's just mainly that Kent guy, isn't it, really? Just in that position.
Say that again?
It's mainly that Kent guy in that position, if he wasn't there.
He makes life a little bit miserable with his stack.
Big blind too.
Yeah, big blind, a little bit deeper.
And so I ended up flattening, which I think is, I'm not sure if that's a decent play or not, it's a bit... I end up doing that a lot, like in spots like this, cause it kind of makes me look a bit stronger than I actually am, but I don't know whether it's good in the long run.
It's difficult, cause if you flatten, and Al Kent or Do Love shoves, you're a horrible place. You're gonna be dominated every time. Um, it's where you kind of have to call.
I mean, it depends, just like, there's a lot of chips in the pot that you could flat, if you think the risk, like, if you think it's worth it to flat, and then you can ramble on, but when it goes right, then you pick up a nice amount of chips, so...
But what, are you gonna fold then, if, if one of the two biggest stacks shoves? I mean, you can't fold to Do Love, cause you shove 10K or...
You can fold to Kent, I reckon, but...
Hmm, it's gonna screw you up.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it all comes down to, are they gonna interpret your flat as ultimate strength? Or as, I'm just calling, as it's a weak play? I mean, I, obviously, they would have to know you. And who'd you save with the regs to your left?
Nonline and Simpson are, the other two might be, but definitely Simpson and Nonline.
Okay. Eh, I, I, I don't know. I think the assumption that we look strong, like, we have to be damn sure that they view it that way as well. And if the other guys especially aren't regs, then they could probably care less what they think you're strong or not, they'll probably assume it's weak. I don't know. I, I, I don't, I'm not a huge fan of ISOing from middle position. I don't know. I, 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 I don't, I'm not a huge fan of ISOing from middle position here. Anybody disagree? I mean, is anybody, uh, think that's the correct play to do?
I think we're too deep to ISO, I mean.
I like folding, because I'd prefer it if we had better equity against chips, because I mean, we don't even crush chip range anyway. Like, we'll never have more decent equity or anything.
Yeah, I mean, uh, against chips, again, I, I, I don't really have a problem with, with ISOing him in general, but I think, yeah, possibly the fact that, you know, our hand isn't crushing, plus the guys behind to our left, okay. Um, yeah, I'd probably just fold here. Easy game. Shove or check, so. This was, I tried to go through and some of the hands that people gave me, and let's see what we got here. So obviously, this is just an alias I created for him. What are you guys doing here with ace-queen? We get a limper, we get a three-Xer, we get a.
Is this a three R or a?
This is.
This is like a freeze out, I don't know.
Uh, shit, what is this game? Um, trying to remember, hold on. I think this is probably a two-fifty.
Um.
Yeah, I think it's probably a two-fifty.
Is it a two-fifty or a three?
What's that? I couldn't hear.
Connection's gone.
Am I, am I breaking up or somebody else like?
Hey.
Hello? Alright, so, obviously, I, I didn't really hear anybody, if anybody said anything, so, so this is a, uh, I'm pretty sure this is a two-fifty, so it's not a three-rebuy. Um, what do you guys think here with ace-queen?
Try to gamble and get a stack. I mean, depending on the stats of the guys, I mean, if, if they're in a, and these guys have a couple of bits in it, probably just be a little bit more careful, but in general, the two of them, probably just gamble.
In a two-fifty, I'd be more inclined to think they are maybe not so, not so good, not so strong. They're in eight or a fifteen, uh, it feels like a fold to me, I mean, three people put money on. Um, I don't even play freeze outs, but I'd fold probably.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we actually reviewed this hand before, I think, with him, um. I think we agree, we were gonna lean towards a fold in this spot, I think we were cons, I, stats might have had something to do with it, I apologize, I don't have the stats on him, on the, in these spots, but I think we were more concerned about this guy, he was kind of a tighter guy, and he three-Xed here. I think that was the main concern. This guy seemed to be a bit wild. Um. But, I don't know, is it, I, I don't know, I don't know, do we need to gamble here with ace-queen? Against this, uh, their perceived ranges here, especially the guy who three-Xed? I don't know, I per, I personally lean towards a fold, so I, if you guys are saying shove, I just wanted to hear why. Is it just a pure gamble?
I don't know, Chris, I'm hearing just fragments of your talking.
What's that?
Am I the only one, or?
Say that again, Patrick?
I'm just hearing fragments of your talking.
Yeah, someone's breaking up a lot, it's not a fit, though, it's, uh.
Alright, so you guys are hearing me alright?
Yeah.
Alright.
That was good again.
Okay, sorry about that, um. Yeah, I was saying, I, I lean towards a fold here, just because I'm not sure what hands we're doing very well against. Um, so I'm not sure if I just take this as a pure gamble, to be honest with you. But if, if you guys feel that, you know, this, this is a good spot, obviously, stats would be helpful in this spot, but let's just take it for what it's worth. Can everybody still hear me?
I can still hear you, I don't know what, what.
Um, so is anybody disagree with the fold here?
No.
Uh, will depend on the stats, I mean, if you guys are pretty loose, I definitely don't mind, I mean. A guy limping under the gun with fourteen hundred chips, probably can't have any crappy ace pair or whatever. And a guy raising with a bigger stack, could be ISOing, I mean. Some two players are so fucking terrible, they could be holding like ace-six there with the raise, or ace-ten, ace-jack.
Gamble, just gamble.
Uh, Ben would be just like, gamble more, so.
I don't know, maybe it was from the stats that we had on these guys, I didn't necessarily think they were gonna be that, that wide.
Actually, if they're any tightish, then probably fold.
Yeah, I think on average, I mean, it's nice to see now that we start crush, but, um. Yeah, I think we were mainly concerned about this guy, he wasn't the, the loosest player, so didn't think we had much equity here at all, with essentially his strength and all-in. Eh, I, I don't think it's the best spot there. This is a... Shit, was this an eight dollar, or, I think this might have been a, uh, this is a three-rebuy, I believe. What do you guys think? Would you, uh, would you ship it here?
No.
He must be raising something that he's prepared to call with.
I'd fold.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's just shop essentially, he's, he's, you know. I mean, yeah, maybe he's weak and he raised intention of folding to the other guy, but. I mean, you could just gamble, if you wanna gamble, gamble.
Set it around.
I, I didn't really think I should, uh, like, stop and go, yeah.
You could, I'd be more inclined to do a potential stop and go from the big blind rather than the small blind. But, and I also could do stop and goes more with ace-high hands and pocket pairs. Um, I, I personally thought this, this should be a fold here, because I, I forget who said it. Um, you know, he's, he's opening with, I, I think the important point is that with our stack size here, he's opening up hands that he's prepared to call off with. So it's probably not gonna be the widest range in the world, making that general assumption without knowing anything about past, whatever, that he's opening a hand he's prepared to call off with, so there's no fold equity. The hand probably isn't gonna be the worst hand in the world, so I don't think it's necessarily a spot we need to, uh, to gamble on. Considering, I don't think there's a lot of hands we're doing great against.
Yep.
Let alone ace-king, nasty river. Uh, let's see, what else we got? Um.
It's an annoying spot.
I, I forget, honestly, I forget which game this is, I don't, I think this is probably like an eight-dollar game. Um, certainly not a.
Yeah, Sumakos is a reg.
Yeah, I know Sumakos is a.
Sumakos is doing two black seven moment as well.
Sumakos is hilarious. Have you seen the video? Sorry, go on.
I was gonna say, yeah, I've, I've seen the video.
What is it? What's that video?
What's that?
I'll send you later.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty funny video. I used to think this guy, uh, I, I know he's got good stats and everything, I know he plays a shit ton of tables, but I see, every time I see him in a hand gesture review, he makes the weirdest goddamn plays.
I think, I think he plays like fifty-plus, I think he plays like fifty tables at once, and he just like plays all-in or fold, everything.
Yeah, I mean, like, I used to play him a lot in eighteen mans, for whatever reason, and he would just be flattening me, he'd be doing the wackiest shit, and I never understood it. Anyway, um.
What's his results like?
I mean, they're, they're pretty sick. For our entertainment. Um. So what do you guys do here with ace-jack? Ship it, min raise? Just fold it? Avoid the scenario altogether and close your eyes?
I don't like folding and calling while raising. Um. It's such an annoying spot, you're such an awkward stack.
We could just tie him down.
If you don't like opening, then just jam it, but an open isn't too bad.
I mean, I'd just jamming without ante there, it's just like, you're risking twenty-six-hundred fifty to win three-hundred. I mean, no one's gonna call you worse, I think we can agree.
Just open then.
Yeah, I think jamming's definitely the worst.
Yeah, I agree, I think.
Just open then, I think.
Yeah, I think open's fine.
And I guess you gotta fold to her, to read. I suppose you raise and then call the guys with like less than fourteen hundred chips.
Then call Sumakos and jam, what about Siriki?
I've gotta call Siriki, he will jam pretty well there.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna probably have to call him.
Probably gonna have like five or six or something like that.
And five roll, clear to fold too, I suppose.
Yeah, because you gotta figure out what's, what's he reshipping on you versus your under-the-gun raise here, you know, so. I, I would, I'm more inclined to just min raise here than, uh, than ship it all-in, I don't think shipping all-in's gonna, especially without annies, this is gonna be, uh, a wonderful spot.
Whoever asked for his stats, they're down there.
Yeah, yeah. I guess he unlocked them, he used to have them locked.
Yeah, yeah, definitely used to have them locked. He's on like a fucking, I don't know how many, break-even stretch, he's on a break-even stretch for the last hundred thousand games, so.
He's Sumakos.
I'd rather jump off a bridge than have that.
Yeah, I mean, he had like a seventy-five thousand came down swing, and now he's picked up again a bit, so. I can't find the vid, I really want it, so.
Uh, I think I've got it around somewhere, it's pretty funny.
Absolutely.
Alright, so what are you guys doing here with ace-nine? Off the top of my head, I don't think Popeye Doyle here is, uh, is a reg, I don't, I haven't seen him.
I never heard of him.
Yeah, I fold to a random.
So let's assume for now he's a random.
Sorry.
Just fold.
I hit the wrong button. Uh, yeah, versus a random, I'm folding.
I should call now.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, maybe not though, maybe if, if that's like the bottom of his range, then it's probably not.
If he was a nine, I'd probably fold.
Yeah, un, unknown, I fold here. And because he hits his ten. What about ace-nine here?
Do you have to call, really?
Yeah, I think it's a much different spot, I would call it.
Uh, yeah, yeah, cool.
Pretty easy spots. Easy game. Alright. And what are we doing here?
Probably gotta jam, I mean, there's so much money on the table.
Um.
You should gamble, Mike.
I can't, I, I mean, I actually shove in the same as calling his shoves, because I don't think he's ever folding, and I wouldn't call his shove with four. Oh, no, no. We've only got seven bigs.
And there's only six thousand on the table, I mean, if you're big, why fold?
Yeah, that's true.
Think I'd fold, to be honest.
I, I agree, if you look at the maths, you, it maybe is a call, it's just like, if you get it in, and he's obviously calling. I don't like flipping for the whole tournament life with like seven, eight bigs.
It also comes down to, you know, equity versus your pot odds, I, I think on that end, we're doing okay here with fours, but I, I understand the concern here with fours, you know, you're flipping.
Forty percent, and.
What's that?
You're also fairly short on the table, so you're gonna get moving anyway, so I doubt you're gonna, gonna get a lot of responsibility this side of the round. Probably every hand will have an open in front of you.
I don't think his opening range is that wide, though, because especially with the other stacks behind.
That's the thing, if it's a random, you're up against a pair here, like maybe, maybe as much as like thirty-five, forty percent of the time, if it's not a reg. If his range is real tight, and it's like, you know, sixes plus, hmm, I don't know, but.
Does anybody recognize this guy that's opening? I guess not.
I don't think so, no, I don't. I, I'm still leaning towards fold, I don't know, it's, alright, but well, if he shoved, would you call? It's, it's the same question essentially, isn't it? If he shoved, would you call? Right, because I mean, he's gonna call the reshove, I assume. So I don't like calling shoves with small pairs, so that's how I'm looking at it, really.
But if he shoved with those stacks after him, then you can't call, really.
No, but, you know.
If maybe, if maybe like the two people, if Kiza and Rayo had the same stack sizes as, as then, as us, then you could probably call.
I mean, like you said, if, if you think he's only opening like sixes plus there, and you know, not even like ace-deuce, then sure, I think you can fold, but I think if, if you can, I mean, if you can include this, I would, stats will obviously help here, but, uh, I don't know, I'm kind of on the fence, I feel so much happier if I had like fives or sixes, fours is getting into that.
Stats would help too.
Yeah. So what do you guys say? Who, who's proponent of a fold, who's proponent of a shove?
Gamble.
Yeah, time to gamble?
Gamble, mate.
Yeah, I, I think.
I say fold in this.
No, I'd fold, I know, seriously, I'd fold, fold.
It might be not one of the worst spots in the world to actually gamble, uh, so all the time you said this might not be one of those bad spots, but, uh, yeah, I'm fine with a fold there, again, eh, he's opening, you can expect to call off versus these stacks, so what, he's opening hands, he's comfortable showing down, um, eh, it's kind of a nasty spot.
If the blinds are about to go up, actually, no, it doesn't matter, does it? Because you've still got an old bit.
So, we don't really know how wide he was, but, you know.
Good gamble.
That's a good gamble. Uh, Mike, I think these are your hands, I think these are Pat's hands now. Pat, how you making out of that MTT, by the way?
Ah, fuck. I'm not sure, Ben, what, what did I drop? Like thirty or twenty-fifth?
Uh, I'm not sure, it would, it would have to fund though, onto end by.
I kind of, I kind of went slow, I'll try to grab the handle off this here in a second.
I'm, uh, on a three, uh, one, on a fine save, and that's why I'm quiet.
Alright, alright, so I guess what's the question here with queens? Because we can't, like, induce or?
We have to fold, raise.
Oh, you asked for a couple of hands and, uh, in these spots, uh, to discuss, so I don't really have questions about the hands, to be honest. You just said definitely lies what you can do, or just min to induce, or just jam with the stack sizes around, so many short stacks.
No, I.
I think min-melling, I like min-melling a little more, but.
I don't, well, me, Ben, we've been talking about this, haven't we? It's like, I, I folded it, and I've, I've made, I've made some mad folds against regs doing that. Because they're always turning over like aces, it's too obvious, to me, for me, it's too obvious.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, i- if you have thirteen big blinds, you know, you could potentially get a little bit, you can induce a little bit more. When you have ten big, if this is a reg table, a reg-filled table, and you have ten big blinds and you min raise, that definitely looks a bit shady. Uh, if it's a random table, I don't think you necessarily need to balance your range, or, you know, if they're doing wacky stuff, you can, if you think a min raise will induce and get the job done to, to get their stack in, by all means do it, I'm, I'm fine with mixing up play like that. But, um, you know, since you're pretty much gonna be shoving every hand that you would normally play in this spot, I think I would just continue to do that, especially, you know, if there were other regs at the table.
Sussy, I think she's a reg.
I, no, I mean, I, against randoms, I don't mind raising, i- i- they need to be quite bad to think you're weak as you're min-raising. But I mean, the, 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 the quality of average player in the three-fifties at the moment, or the eight-fifteens, uh, is really not that low. I think people will know, I'd rather, I'd rather raise at the bottom of my range, try and make it like you've got queens, these aces, but.
Yeah.
Like, if you've got like a, you know, like bottom of my range, there's probably like ace-ten or something, I'd probably be rather like raise ace-ten and just call the reach-up. I mean, yeah.
I mean, this hand plays out regardless, the same way, but, um, yeah, I think I would probably just keep it, when I have ten or nine big blinds, most of the time I'll just ship it in with this hand like I would any other hand. Um, yeah, I mean, if you wanna get tricky, I, I don't mind, and I do that a lot as well, where you're a little bit shorter, and you min raise, or even raise it to like two-point-five or three, so that it looks like you're trying to induce something with a hand that you actually really wanna just get folds with. Um, so I'm okay with mixing in that type of play, but here with queens, I'd probably just make it look like every other hand I would ship. Especially if they're a reg. Um, so, re-ship iso, pretty good spot.
Uh, re-ship iso, or any room just too flat to wide, to widen the range of the guy, I mean, he's probably gonna call with anything. I mean, if he, if he's gonna call, he's beating you.
To widen the range of?
Any room, flating to allow him to jam hands like a king's hand, queen jack, and that kind of stuff.
I, I don't think you really want that to happen, though. With ace five, I, I think you just, you take the pot here, get in an isolated pot versus this guy who's a short stack shoving very wide, and, and I, I don't think you necessarily wanna get into a, a three-way pot here, I know the stacks are a little, are different, and, but, I don't think you really wanna in- induce anything with ace five potentially.
I don't, I don't think, in my opinion, in spots like this, I don't think it makes any difference whether you shovel, flat, I think if he, if the guy in the big blind's getting in, he's gonna get it in whether you flat or whether you shove over the top.
Well, he's saying like, does a flat potentially induce more action, uh, it, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't for some people, but.
Depends how thick he is, I mean, you put in half his stack, though, he must know that.
No, I, I, I agree, it's probably.
Surely there was a stat for thickness?
Yeah. I think it's faulty steel, probably.
Just ship her in, yeah, I'm not gonna get too tricky there.
That's flat, sick.
What do you guys think here with fives?
Ah, such an.
Max Ranger, is he a random?
I think so, I don't recognize him. Um.
I think he's gonna be flipping a lot.
Similar to the four spot, in my, like, you know, it's just like, it's, you're kind of.
Hold on, I don't hear a lot anymore, I'm missing a lot of conversation.
Uh.
Uh, I was just wondering, one, is this guy a random, max ranger, and obviously, you know, do we iso here?
I think if it's a random, I'd fold. If it's a reg, if it's a reg, like, it's, it's the same as the four spot, if it's a reg, you're probably gonna be like forty-five percent against his range, and you're probably gonna have like good enough pot to justify getting it in, but it's just like, I don't know, I don't, I don't like, I don't, I normally avoid spots like this, I'd rather open shove, I know it's not always easy to get a good spot to open shove, but I'd rather, I don't know, I don't like, I don't like reshipping isolating with like low pairs, because, not, not a spot like this, anyway, if I had like forty K or something, maybe, or not against these stacks, but.
There's still heaps of people behind us as well.
Yeah.
I think this seems, to me, seems a decent shove. Is it eleven gold?
Yeah, I mean, for, for one, if it's a, if it's a random, I'm definitely folding, reg, you could make more of an argument for, for potentially isoling, but I, I think with the amount of players behind, uh, I'm not necessarily a huge fan of, w- with fives, maybe like sevens or something like that, I'd be more inclined, but, uh.
It feels a bit gambly, I, I know that, you know, I was saying gamble, but I'd say generally, I don't know, it's plus EV, I reckon, against a reg, but, do you wanna, you know, if you lose the pot, you're finished pretty much.
Well, it's, it's plus EV against his range and all that, but you still get to account for the amount of time someone behind you has a hand.
Yeah, but that's gonna happen anyway, we usually have anyways, because we're gonna shove this hand anyway, and if you think you're ahead of his range.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Anyway, you're gonna get it in anyway, so, if you think you're ahead of his range, you're already extra chips in, in the pot and in the middle, should make your.
I don't think you are ahead of a, of a reg's range, I think, I don't think you're ahead of a reg's, a reg's range.
You don't think, are we talking he's a reg, because?
I mean, even if he's a reg, maybe, if he's shoving like ace two, ace three, ace four, but, but you're probably flipping with his range, maybe slightly behind if you put the pairs in, he's just gonna shove it. I mean, it's, I'd take it, it's sometimes because of the pot, it's, you know, there's six thousand dead chips in the pot.
I mean, what, what are you shoving from here, if you're the max ranger guy?
Uh, quite a lot.
Super wide.
But probably nothing dominated by fives, though. Maybe ace four, I guess, or ace five.
I think maybe if the blinds were going up in like the next minute, I'd be more tempted to do it, just because, you only have like three hands after that to get in.
Um.
Ben, stop breathing.
Sorry, man. It's just, you just want to laugh too much.
Um, you know, Paul, what you were saying was, you know, if we're gonna ship this hand anyway, the question is, does this five big blind?
Yeah, it's just about his range, isn't it?
Does, does the five big blind stack deter us from shipping anyway? Um, I, I definitely think, I, I don't think it can be just looked at a vacuum like that, where it's say, well, I've shipped this anyway, so, I'm gonna.
No, but, I, I only meant like, if, if we feel that we, we are flipping with his range anywhere, at best, then there's plenty in the middle. But I don't think we are flipping at best, I think he's got ace two suited, ace three suited, ace four suited, stuff like that, two, three, fours.
Yeah, but you've got to balance them up with the, with the, the high pairs, because every time it takes ace three, ace four, then, so it's a flip, really.
Don't we mind a flip with so much chips in the middle?
No, but it's not a flip, maybe, I don't, I suppose we don't, but.
I think even if he had a fairly tightish range, a fairly tight, we're still flipping against that range, and with everything in the middle.
Yeah, I mean, it, it also, there also begs the question of like, is, is having an edge or, you know, a plus EV spot always a plus EV spot, and what I mean by that is, do we take this spot, which could be very marginal at best, and potentially give up future spots that we could have with, with, with our stack, so, that's a consideration to make as well, that, you know, if you do, you know, third since you go wizard, for example, and.
Well, I'm definitely not saying that, I'm definitely not saying that, I'm just giving my.
Yeah.
Hold on for one second, the guy's stats are nineteen eighteen, and, and ninety percent three bet, based on sixty-two hands, not a huge sample, but, in any case, fairly aggressive.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't, if, in, for my, in my opinion, I don't think his stats are relevant, because, like, I'm saying, even if I think he's a reg, I'm saying I'd still fold.
Yeah, I think it's still a little different to them fours though, Mike, because that fours, and guys, uh, got option, is actually putting, chips and through choice, where this situation is kind of desperate, and so. And I just, I don't equate, I don't equate, it's not a bad spot to dial to get in with fives, yeah.
So Ben, you agree with the shove here?
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
It's class, uh, would you, are you saying?
It's not the best spot in the world, is it, but?
I don't, I don't think shoving's bad, um, I, I think it's, I'd say it's definitely plus EV, um, with the pot, you've got one point, you've got loads, the pots are great. I just tend to not, I tend to try and avoid getting in against, in this kind of spot, I'm, I'm, CV is, it's, it's, it's plus EV, I think, I'd say.
Ben, were you saying, would you get it in versus a reg or a random, or are you saying random, fold, reg, shove?
Uh, I don't know, I think against a reg, I think it's, I'd definitely gamble here, because we're actually short. Uh, and like, if, if he folded, you will get it in anyway, so, you are getting a pretty sick odds on a, on getting it in here, uh, but against, against a random, it's gotta be pretty tight to fold this, I think, still.
Alright, it's just certainly a, a mixed bag of answers, you know, what we do, I, I'd, I'd actually probably end up leaning towards a fold in general. Uh, but reg, you could definitely make an argument, so I think get it in for sure, uh, based upon it, it is most likely a plus EV spot. How plus EV is always, uh, you know, a question based on what we really think that he would be shoving, but.
To those saying that they fold, what, what pair would you jam, like, sevens or?
Definitely, like, definitely sevens, and then like, prob, and the sixes I'd probably have a harder time with. I mean, I'm not, I, I mean, you guys have kind of persuaded me, to be honest, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that I'm right, actually, I thi- I think you guys might be right, I'm, I'm not sure.
I think either way, he's not too bad, to me.
Yeah, exactly, I think it's such a class spot.
If, if the blinds were going up, I'd be tempted to get it in, just because you only got three spots left to get it in, and if you don't get a spot to, to get it all in, then you're just gonna get hit by the three K blinds, and then you're gonna be down a lot.
I mean, in, in reality, it's the kind of spot where if I've had a good day, I'd probably get it in, if I had a really bad day, and I didn't feel like busting, and I had no other d, I'd probably fold.
Yeah, I think that as well, Mike.
That's the reality of the situation.
Yeah, true, yeah.
Not saying that's the right way to play, but, you know, you'd look at it differently.
It's a, it's a, it's a real-life scenario of way to play.
Yeah.
Like, ah, this whole goddamn setup awful, I'm just gonna fold here. Uh, I think we can ship that one pretty comfortably. And we get a limper here.
Looks like an MTT.
Yeah, MTT.
Stats would help, but I'd just.
Hold on, I'm trying to look for the stats, give me a sec.
Yeah, I, I think this is the kind of spot where stats are really important, I, but I'd ju-
Yeah.
Stats are important in the sense that you're concerned that he'd be trapping.
Yeah, I mean, if the guy's sitting on like thirty VPIP, then I'm shoving. Like, I'm definitely shoving, but obviously, if the guy's playing like, you know, ten nine, or twelve eleven, or thirteen ten, those kind of stats, like rating stats, I'll probably.
Yeah, I mean, it, uh, it's also, you know, the VPip versus the pre-flop raise, if a guy's playing thirty and seven, you know, obviously, he's limping a huge portion of his range that he is, that he's playing with, I mean, if, oh, even if the guy's like a random, but he's playing like thirty, twenty-eight, I would still be concerned in that sense, when he, because he's usually a more aggressive random player, and he's most likely raising every hand he opens, so when he does limp, I'd still be concerned, that that would be, you know, even though he's not a reg, I would still be concerned that he'd be potentially trapping, but, outside of that.
The guy's.
Go ahead.
Sorry, the guy's stats are thirteen six, uh, zero three betting, it's, uh, forty chance.
Thirteen six.
Actually not.
It, it still kind of tells me that, I mean, he's limping, or, you know, he's not raising half the hands that he's playing, so he's a pretty passive player, I would still be okay with shipping with. You know, it's with him. If the guy was like thirteen ten, yeah, I'd be a little bit more concerned, thirteen twelve, something like that, but, it also tells me he's limping a lot.
Yeah, I, I don't know, if, if you see a guy like that with a big stack limping, usually it just means a donkey done it, like, obviously, ace eight's way in front of that, so.
What game is this, Pat, is this the one dollar rebuy?
I don't know if you heard you.
Sorry, cut a, cut a mic muted.
This is the, uh.
Give me a sec.
Nice river.
Now, this is the one dollar, uh, three, three X.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
But yeah, I was totally fine with you isoling that guy that limped there, I don't think we have to assume it's aces.
Yeah.
I mean, if you've got seven bigs, you can't worry about the people behind you or anything like that.
Alright, so we get a, we get a three X here from middle-ish, early-ish position. What do we do with ace nine?
Uh, the guy's stats are thirty-two, twenty-two, zero, three bet, uh, based on fifty hands.
Still fold three bet? Well, they, it's pretty men, even if you jam here.
I'd hold, hold.
Uh, if I remember well, this guy has been opening up like hell a lot, um.
If it's three X, then it's.
He's two Xing, three Xing, four Xing, he's done a lot of different things.
The only problem is, if you, I mean, it depends, if he's bad, and you know, I suppose this isn't really relevant, but, he should, no, if he's half d, and if he shoves, you'd have put in, uh, one point three, you'll need to call one million into a pot of like, I mean, you'll have too good of a loss to fold, really, I mean, I wouldn't raise three, I wouldn't three X and then fold to a eleven big line shove. But, that's what worries me, if you had like fourteen or fifteen bigs, I'd be more inclined to shove, but it depends on whether he understands pods or not, which is, you know, impossible to know, really.
I have thirty-two, twenty-two, zero, three, but kind of indicates a moron.
Yeah.
I think I should stop going.
I don't know if you can allow that.
That's not a bad option, wouldn't it be a bad option? I thi- I think a guy that, that potentially that loose and crazy, though, I don't mind just, I don't mind getting it in here. I think in general, I would normally fold, but if you're saying this guy's kind of out of control, and you could certainly be well ahead, I, I don't see an issue with, uh, with getting it in, stop and go isn't bad either, I don't mind a stop and go.
Call the chess.
Alright. Alright, boys and girls, I think that was, uh.
What, what did you actually do, limp out?
Ah, shit, yeah, we probably should show the hand. Keep it in suspense, um. Ace eight.
Ah, nice one.
There we go, nice, 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 um, alright, I think that's it for the, uh, for the games, yeah, we already went through.
Hold on, let me, can we pass you one more hand?
I sent you one more as well, in, in the chat.
Hold on.
I was just avoiding.
In your chat, just, just personal message.
God, it's ten plus five.
I'm heads up in this free rebuy. I'm just lost in sixty K flip.
Lost sixty K, yeah.
Yeah. Ace, jack against eights.
You are now?
No, I'm, I'm heads up still, I was chip leader though, now I'm right.
What's your, uh, what's your user?
Uh, IP's on you, twenty-two, I'm on, I'm hidden, so.
I, oh, alright, yeah.
Hang on.
We're not allowed to be hidden.
Um. Is this guy a reg, random?
Who?
It's a reg.
Dodger, I think.
Uh. Set him up.
Doesn't ring a bell.
Pretty sure he's a, well, I think I've got.
No, he is. Shut up, scope him, he's a reg.
Dodger, Alex, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think, just thinking back, even if those are reg, still a bit of a risky call.
I'd fold, probably, calling shoves with like weak aces, it's just like, you're never, never really gonna be ahead. And if they've got ace two, three, four, five, you're probably gonna be splitting about, I don't know, seventy, sixty, seventy, seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd probably lean towards a fold here.
Yeah, definite fold for me this year.
Yeah. Yeah, I would fold it. See, fold.
Yeah.
Alright.
I just wanted to send, put it up, see what people thought.
Yeah.
Alright.
I've got my saves.
My way.
Ah, sick.
Come on, I'll take that as if it didn't end well.
No, it was the best time, I guess, I was the happiest one, especially.
It wasn't good.
Back anyway.
I don't understand what's happening.
Uh, the guy's stats, by the way, are nineteen eleven, uh, five percent three bet, and eight aggression factor plus flop.
I'll put it up to like, uh, eight thousand, seven thousand plus hundred, something like that.
Yeah, I think I made a mistake earlier, I was checking behind and trying to see the flop cheapie.
Being pretty deep. I'm waiting on it.
There's like twenty-four, twenty-five players left, I think, in the twenty, uh, the big twenty-three.
So I guess the question is, do we limp, or, sorry, do we just check, do we put in a raise, or do we ship it in?
Rory, what was the, um, stats?
Uh, hold on, hold on now.
Nineteen ten.
Three player again. What the fuck are you, Eric? Uh, nineteen eleven, I think it's a P five, five percent three bet, uh, aggression factor is eight.
Yeah. I think you definitely gotta be raising that.
Or what worse?
Yeah, you definitely gotta be raising pre-flop.
Yeah, I agree with the guy.
Yeah, agree on the pre-flop raise, but then, as played, let's continue the hand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Look, you see as many people trapping from late positions as you do from early positions, you know?
Here, I checked to, to check raise.
Hmm.
And hopefully get enough to hand here, take a pot down here, because I've been quite passive lately.
I mean, I, I can't say that a check raise would necessarily be wrong, since it's, it's really a, I mean, you certainly don't wanna be check calling, um, in my, I don't necessarily like check calling.
I think if I checked it before, I'd probably give up now.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's a small bet, though, it's only a third pot bet, so, the problem is, if you raise and you flat, you're fucked, basically, because then what next?
Yeah.
Because then the pot's gonna be twenty-four K, twenty-five K, and you'll have seventy, and then you'll, then, you know, you can either give up, or you can bet, and if it's flat, you're completely fucked.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I just played it some stupidly, actually, I'm a little bit tired of it. Yeah, I think I just play this hand stupidly, actually, I'm a bit tired of the hardy output.
Yeah, I think given that there was really no aggression from the beginning, and just how it played out, I, I think I agree with Mike, just let it go. I mean, you could argue for a check raise, certainly, since it's just a pure bluff, and if you really just think that he's limping and stabbing at this, at this flop, that's, I can understand that, but-
I don't know how you would check raise it.
Is there a heart on the turn? Because if there's a heart on the turn, I can see why this could go wrong.
I don't know, no heart on the turn.
I think once he does this, we can, uh, certainly... Toss it, in my opinion, I don't, I'm-
I think you can call here for another 8,000, with such a plus size, try to enter a, a queen or a king, or a flush draw.
I'd be so tempted to shove over that raise.
Vot.
Against a passive guy who limps, though, he's likely to just click it back with, you know, a 5 or a nut.
Oh, no.
Ah, Christ, you hit your queen.
Also, he's got kings, I guess.
No, my guess is pocket 6s, that's my guess.
Yeah, same thing. It's probably something horrible like 5, 8 or something, horrific.
I mean, I guess since you called, you obviously can't fold at this point.
Yeah, no, I'd definitely call that. That's horrible.
That's, that's pretty dirty.
Uh, the call on river, that's actually the question, is that a pop, or, could I have still got it away there, I've been taking it for ages, and I've discussed a hand with Ben while playing.
If you're gonna fold there, why the fuck are you calling the 3 bet on the flop?
Yeah, that's what I said, I thought that.
Yeah, but that's why, that's why we called, because he could be on a, he could be on a draw here.
But I think when he 3 bets to 20k, it pretty much flips his hand over.
Yeah.
Doesn't make much sense to do, if he, if he would have just flat, it'd probably leave if he had a flush draw, like when you 3 bet, when you check raise.
A lot of times what I think in these spots, you know, the guy limped, he didn't show, nobody really showed any aggression pre-flop. A lot of times I just as, assume like, there's no, there's not a lot of reason to, for him to get too involved and to start bluffing a ton. Um, given how the, kind of the hand progressed, so, when he is raising and, you know, re-raising you, I tend to give him more credit in a spot like that than, uh... You know, than, even if it was raised pre-flop, for example.
Cool. Cool, cheers, that's all.
Nasty turn, could have, can't believe the queen hit, um... Alright.
I mean, what, what are you doing if a heart comes?
I mean, you could, I, I think you gotta get away if a heart comes.
What, you're calling 4, just a queen or a king, I'm like, no, I don't mean you, I'm just meaning like... You know, the agenda is.
Say that again?
When you call a flat, you know, when you, when you click it back on a flop and you call that, what's he doing if a heart comes anyway?
Uh, it-
Probably done a jam, probably done a race, uh, race a turn or jam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, wait, I've, hold on, I got confused for a second here. You're saying, what, if a heart comes, what's Pat gonna do?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Would, so would you just-
We've still got the 2 overs and the heart draw as well, if it comes to a heart, what, what?
You would just ja, you know, just jam the turn into him, is that what you're saying?
I'd, I'd go for another check raise, I mean, we bet it flop really small, so I assumed the guy is kinda bet small on the turn, and that's what I assumed. So the problem was actually to do a check and a shove here, at this point, but he jammed, so-
Right, that, that's what I was thinking, I was like, when, even if a heart comes and he jams, like, I'm just not calling the jam, if, if we just have a heart there. I guess that's what I was interpreting it as. So, alright. Is that, is that all she wrote?
Sorry?
Sorry?
I feel like I keep cutting out, is that, uh, is that all the hands?
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
Alright, alright, guys, I think that was a pretty good session, uh-